I'd like to bring the order, bring to order the Planning Commission and Traffic Impact Fee Advisory Committee meeting for tonight. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yeah, I'm going to start with our Traffic Impact Fee Advisory Committee. Mr. Schultzer.
Present.
Mr. Dolan.
Present.
Mr. Kim Claxton is not here with us this evening. For our regular Planning Commission members, Mr. Selebus.
Here.
Mr. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Kartaphillis.
Here.
Mrs. Corble.
Here.
Mr. Magrino, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Mills are not here this evening.
All right, thank you. We're going to not have the minutes from the previous meeting at our next meeting, I'm sure.
Yes.
And I don't see any reports or correspondence. That's still the same?
Correct.
And no site plans or subdivisions, Bob, you review, is that still the same?
That's correct.
Any agenda items? We're going to have the same agenda, anything changing there?
No changes to the agenda tonight.
Okay. Are there any audience comments not designated for any of our agenda items tonight? Seeing none, then we'll go on. There isn't any old business, so we'll go right into the new business. And first order of business is a recommendation to the council from this board here, and it will be about the traffic impact fee and further updates.
Yeah. I'll, in 2008, Peters Township chose to do traffic impact fees, and that was quite the process. And one of the parts of the traffic, having traffic impact fees in a community, you have a traffic impact fee capital improvement program. The MPC says that the municipality who has adopted traffic impact fees may annually review and update their traffic impact fee capital improvement program. We've been pretty consistent here over the last three, four years of doing an annual update. We have Mike Mudry here from our traffic consulting firm, Traffic Planning and Design, Inc. He'll walk the committee. The committee is a combination of the Planning Commission and the three gentlemen we have on the committee. You know, the committee's going to look at possibly raising the traffic impact fee, PM peak hour trip rate, projects that have been completed on our list of projects, projects that we want to add this time, and also it adjusts the build years for all the projects that we have on our traffic impact fee capital improvement program. So Mike's going to walk us through, like Dave said, it's just, it's a recommendation to council on the update. Thank you, Ed.
Ed stole a little bit of my introductory thunder, so that's okay, but he was right on spot on with that. So the report we sent to you, this is the same report format that you've seen in the past. I'm mainly going to go through the tables in the back. We could start off by just talking a little bit about, there is a Northern Impact Fee District and a Southern Impact Fee District. There is a district map that delineates that. When you collect funds for the impact fee, they're deposited in an account separate for the North and the South. Just as a running total for the account balance right now, if you look at Table 1, the Northern TSA through the end of September, from the life of the project, we've collected $1.17 million of impact fees. We've expended just over $1 million. There is a balance currently in the Northern Transportation Service Area Impact Fee Fund of $110,368.68. There's been a major drawdown the last three years of that impact fee fund paying for Rolling Hills. So we went from just a little over $700,000 before Rolling Hills down to about 100 and, what did I say, 110,000. And then Table 2 is the Southern Transportation Service Area. Again, over the life of the program, we've collected $1.07 million approximately. We've spent about $981,000, and our balance right now at the end of September was $92,373.49. And again, our big drawdown has been paying for Rolling Hills Drive. The next couple tables just talk about the number of trips that we've paid through over the years. There is a running chart of developments that have paid impact fees, how much they've paid, how many trips they've paid. So over the life of the project in the Northern Traffic Impacts Fee Area, there's been 829 trips, and in the Southern Zone, there has been 785 trips. Again, in last year, Rolling Hills was our biggest expenditure just last, just through this year, through, since our last update, I mean, sorry, through 2020. Rolling Hills has been about $312,000 of impact fee dollars, have gone towards that. And as Ed said, we're able to meet at least annually, but our last update was actually in 2020. So it's been a little, almost two years since our last adjustment. And what I'd like to do now is talk about the things that we are asking you to approve, to move forward with. One of the things that we do, and it's at the bottom there that Seth just pulled up, there's the list of projects in Table Number 5. It's a long list, projects Number 1 through 28, and then a number of projects listed A through G. And if you look at that chart, there is, the third column is a build year, and that's the current build year of these projects right now. And what we're doing is, we're proposing to push the build year out because obviously we're not catching up and keeping pace with these projects. I mean, there's more projects than we'll ever be able to do, so we're pushing the years out on these projects. And what's that, what that allows us to do is, we're allowed to do a cost adjustment on the projects based on construction inflation for the last two years. So there's a number of build year in Column C of Table 5, and then there's the proposed build year, which is Column E of Table 5. And I could quickly go down through them. There's projects on Route 19, projects 1, 2, and 3, where we're proposing to push a lot of these, these projects out from 2025 to 2027. Project Number 4 is Oakwood and McMurray from 2025 to 2027. Some other updates, Project Number 6B, which was McMurray and Thomas, which is the right turn lane that's out there now, which was done as part of a Greenlight Go grant, so that project is actually complete. Projects 9A, which is a traffic signal at McMurray and Brookwood, pushing it out 2024 to 2026. Project 15 is a roundabout at Beebout and Turkeyfoot, 2025 to 2027. 16A, a signal at Venetia and Beebout, pushing that out from 2021 to 2025. The next two, these are project date changes from 2025 to 2027. That's a roundabout at Venetia and McCombs and intersection widening at Venetia and Sugar Run. Project Number 24, Rolling Hills Drive, was complete in 2022. Then the last three projects, B, D, and E, we're proposing to push from 2025 to 2027. That's Thomas Road at Just About, Beebout Road from Turkeyfoot to Timberlake, and relocate Just About Road at, relocated Just About Road at Thomas Road. If you notice, the majority of these projects, I'm only requesting to push back two years at this time because construction costs, if you've tracked this kind of thing, have been crazy in the last two years. The engineering news record, construction cost index increase is averaging about over 7% per year for the last two years. So I didn't want to get crazy and say we're going to move a project five or six years, which would probably be more realistic, but I didn't want to throw in a six, seven-year, 7% inflation factor, seeing as we can come back and revisit these projects every two years. I think we're already seeing some construction cost leveling out at this time. So I didn't think it'd be realistic to, you know, pile 7% of inflation on for anything more than two years to these, to these projects. So that's the first thing that we're asking about, is updating Table 5 for changing the build years in Column C to the build years proposed in Column E. The next thing that we're asking for your approval on is two new projects being added to the list. Froby Road Intersection Realignment at Sugar Camp Road, and that would be where the Tuscany 2 project you'll hear from tonight is located nearby. If you're familiar with that intersection, it's kind of a Y intersection. And I don't know, Seth, have you scrolled down? There's a sketch of it somewhere.
Froby and Sugar Camp?
Oh, I'm sorry, this is, Froby and Sugar Camp, I'm sorry, I'm getting my intersections mixed up. This is Froby and Sugar Camp, right? This is the one where you're coming up Sugar Camp across from the horse farm, and Froby Road's kind of coming in at that odd angle, it's really steep. This project would be to bring that road out at a T intersection, improve the geometry a little bit, especially with all the development that we're going to be talking about on Froby Road in the future. And then the second project, Number 28, this is the one near Tuscany, this is Just About Road and Sienna Trail, kind of the same thing, Sienna Trail and Just About comes in at a Y-shaped intersection. And this project would look to not only relocate Just About Road and tighten up that radius, but be able to bring Sienna Trail in at a 9-degree angle. Improve the geometry, improve the sight lines, just improve that intersection in general. I don't know if anybody has any questions? If you want to jump in now, or we can wait till the end, it doesn't matter. If you'd like to jump in now, feel free.
Mike, these are all the longer range projects. I know we have some others in the township that are...
We have two projects that are going to happen next, in the next two years. 2023, 2023 is Valleybrook and Beebout Roundabout, that'll go into construction in the spring of next year. Following that project's completion, the next project in 2024 will be the intersection of Beebout, Thompsonville, and East McMurray.
Right.
That'll get a signal in turn lanes.
Did Galley and Waterdam fall off?
It's on our list of projects.
The Galley/Waterdam project's still on the list. At one point, we approached PennDOT about putting a traffic signal in that we thought it was, you know, it was warranted.
It was on, off, on.
But they came back and said, without the turn lanes out there, they would not prove a traffic signal. So we're, we're, that's still one of our priorities, and Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, I still think that's a priority on the list of remaining projects. The other two Ed had mentioned are definitely PennDOT projects, they are being let by PennDOT. The Roundabout is actually scheduled for bid openings, I think the first week of November coming up, and their schedule for PennDOT is to have that completed in one construction season. So their, their plan is to have by November of next year, to have the Roundabout complete and open.
And did the light at Thomas and McMurray, East McMurray, fall off the list?
That is still on there, but I think with the way the improvements are, with what we did with the striping on McMurray underneath the bridge and adding the right turn lane at Thomas, I think it's helped somewhat that that's no longer, I mean, it's still on the list, but it's not at the top of the list on the radar that we're looking at like Waterdam and Galley.
Right, okay. Mike, I have a question on that Froby Road. Will that, whenever that intersection is made into a 90, will that align with the, I know that that property across the way is being developed, is that going to make a plus sign intersection there or no?
That, that project's going to line up across from Pemberley, I think, right?
No, this project will line up across from Royal Estates, but it won't be a T intersection. So there, right, what you said is correct. The Royal Estates, one of their entrances will tee up with the Pemberley entrance, which is further to the south from this proposed intersection, or this relocated intersection. The other entrance into what would be Royal Estates is further to the east of Sugar Camp as you approach the residence. So it's still a reasonable distance away from this actual intersection as well.
Oh, I see, so they'll be far enough apart to not...
Yes, it won't be like an offset, like within 100 feet or 200 feet. There's separation between this intersection and the Royal Estate intersection.
Because that area has decent site distance, that's why I was thinking, but if it's not there...
So I can keep going here. We do talk a little bit about the actual impact fee itself. Right now, the impact fee is $1,525 per PM peak hour trip. There is a long calculation sheet at the bottom of Table 5 that talks about theoretically under the MPC, the amount of impact fee that we could be charging, and right now it's over $6,000 a trip. So we, when council and this committee choose to fund it at the 1525 level, there's definitely a shortfall in the funding program that we would have to get other funds to build all these things on the impact fee program. But if you look at the top of Page 6 in the report, there are a number of communities that also have impact fees. You can see some of those ranging from Cranberry Township has an $1,800 impact fee, Richland Township has one of their districts at 1,917 a trip, Murraysville's at 1,335, Pine Township and Finley are at 1,300, and South Fayette's highest is 1,326 a trip. You see a little bit of disparity, the ones that are in the lower end usually have a lot more commercial-type development that they rely on, so there's more trips, so they can have a lower fee. The ones at the higher end, like Cranberry and Richland, the majority of their development that's left is residential, so they tend to have higher fees. Talking to staff and getting their recommendation, their recommendation for this improvement is to bump the impact fee up from 1,525 to 1,600 hours a trip. That's only a 4.9% increase, $75 per trip, and then when council would pass it next month, hopefully, any new applications after that point would be charged the $1,600 per PM peak hour trip.
Mike, what was the previous increase?
I think previous before that, we only went from 1,500 to 1,525.
And when was that increase?
2019.
Thank you.
It was implemented in 2020. It went into effect.
Correct.
Right. And just, and to that point, again, like I said, construction costs are higher than the increase that we're proposing, so construction's going up at last two years at least, over 7%. So we're, we're between inflation and construction inflation, we're a little less than that right now.
And the, these impact fees, they give us the ability to do some in-house projects that we participate in or that are strictly on township roads, but they also allow us to put an ante in for where we can get state funding for other roads, and that, doesn't that increase our capability of moving some of our projects to the front of the line when the states?
Right, you're correct. So when the, when Center Church Road up here was done a number of years ago, the township stepped up with impact fees as, as a share to go along with PennDOT, and that allowed PennDOT to adjust their money. They were able to free up money that they had because the township was kicking some money in. I do know on our allocation that I'll talk about in a moment, we do have money set aside. PennDOT has mentioned it, but they're not saying that they're going to need it, but we do have money set aside for the Roundabout at Valleybrook and Beebout and the project up at Beebout and McMurray. Again, at one point, PennDOT asked about it, so we put it on the plan in case we'd need it, but I think the way the funding is shaking out, they are not going to ask us for that local match. But you're right, Ted, that gets us kind of, makes it an attractive project when PennDOT's, you know, there's only so much money out there, and they've got five projects they're comparing. If they see one where a local township is willing to pay some of the match, it makes it a more attractive project for them to, to get behind.
Is it fair to say that, I'm sorry, is it fair to say that the, the majority of the development in Peters right now, or looking towards the future right now, is residential versus commercial?
Yeah, I mean, even if we do commercial, I mean, we can, we can assess for, you know, redevelopment of commercial, but the really, there's not a lot of, there's no massive amounts of vacant land that we could build a brand-new shopping center.
Right.
Or things like that, things that they've done in, say, like South Fayette.
Sure. So wouldn't that put us more like a Cranberry then?
Yeah, I would agree. I would agree that we're relying on residential more, and the fees would tend to need to be higher to keep up with that.
There are areas zoned for commercial in Venetia area, along Venetia Road, that may someday generate some commercial, a lot more PM peak hour trips.
But that's not our bread and butter at this point.
It is not.
That's not right.
Definitely residential.
And we're approving residential projects right now, right.
When the commercial projects, when they're, you said when they're redeveloped or something like that, the traffic impact fees charged for those are just the delta between if there's more traffic?
It's, it's the delta. So if you have a, I don't know, if you have like a Dunkin' Donuts that becomes a Walmart, the Walmart would get the credit for the Dunkin' Donuts already, they'd pay the incremental.
Right.
And not saying that that's anything that's happening in Peters, that's just a crazy example that people can relate to, that there's a big difference in trips. There's nothing like that happening.
Just replay.
No, I asked because I think, I think the increase is too low. That's why I asked for the comparison and where the numbers sit, because I think, I think if we were doing it yearly and you just go incrementally, would have gone 1,550, 1,575, and just with inflation and construction costs, and I work in the construction field over what, I think, 25 bucks extra as a leap, I personally don't think it's enough, so that's why I wanted to make sure I was right about my assumptions.
Mike, another, when all these means a portion of Kmart, they didn't have to pay an impact fee, they didn't?
Correct.
Correct.
And then balance, whoever moves takes over the rest of it, again.
Probably not.
It'll be a push.
Yes.
For example, on Route 19, the next commercial project that'll happen will be Huntington Bank. They're, they're taking over a former doctor's office space and a hair salon. Their traffic impact fees, even with those credits, is $73,000.
Right.
So the bank will be paying $73,000 traffic.
Okay, right.
Mike, if you wouldn't mind being brief with anything about, for the audience sake, the southern area is what, the northern part is what, and how do, how do the traffic impact fees that are collected in certain part apply only to that area, or do they get passed through?
So I like to try to think, I was very crafty about drawing this, it's not a true north-south line. The majority of projects are actually on the boundary line, which allows us to take advantage of taking money from either the north or south. I've done this before, so I thought this out very well. There are a few projects that are exclusively in the southern zone, you can only use the southern money for that. There's a handful exclusively in the northern zone. But if you look at the lower left-hand part of the page, we're down by 19 in Waterdam. The, the boundary line between north and south runs up Route 19 to McMurray Road, cuts across McMurray Road. Notice how we conveniently changed the line a few years ago to match Rolling Hills Drive around the new high school, back to McMurray Road. Out McMurray, McMurray Road all the way, I think, out to Brookwood.
Correct.
Down Brookwood to...
Sugar Camp.
Sugar Camp, and then it wiggles back over to...
Beebout.
Beebout, and then down Beebout all the way into Venetia. Or no, wait, it stops, it turns there again. What is that, Seth?
The clover.
Hmm.
Turkeyfoot.
Is that Turkeyfoot? Then it turns and goes out Turkeyfoot. So that's, the stuff above is in the north, the stuff below is the south, it's not really north and south, but there's madness about why we draw the lines, because in the MPC, an impact fee district can only be, Seth, scroll up a little bit there.
Seven square miles.
Seven square miles, so we have the northern district at 5, is it 5.5, and the southern at 5.9. And all, and when we drew this map, all the yellow is, I believe excluded, because it's already residential homes that were built, so no sense having an impact fee district over a place that's all residential subdivision that was already built, so.
And this, this came up earlier this year with that Camden Village Townhouse development. I don't know if you remember my presentation, we were not able to charge impact fees because they're one of these excluded areas that we can't charge impact fees on.
So the last thing, and, and, you know, we can talk, more questions if you'd like. Did you want, did you have a question before we moved on?
The question that I have is, do the, do the impact fees for commercial versus residential need to be the same?
So you can't, you have to charge it by trip. And so where that shakes out is, is a home generates typically, you know, X number of trips for PM peak hour versus square footage of, of commercial or retail. They, they generate a lot different levels, basically.
So the trip fee for commercial and residential needs to be...
It has to be the same, but, but we get that based on trips. Like a single-family home's generating one trip, but like Ed said, the bank is generating 70 trips. So it's not the fee that's different, it's the trips and how we assess the fee per trip.
And if you were ever decide that the trips increased because a bank became more popular than it is now, you, is this the time?
We can't, we can't do that. So we can't go back and, and so the law's written, so we can't go back and charge people more if we find out that they generate more.
Successful.
But if you found out, if, if there was a business that became more popular, then who decides how many trips that business?
You can only assess it at the time of the land development.
Right.
So at a building. Now, if there's a reuse, you can assess them when they go to get their occupancy license. You can, you assess new construction when they get their building license, their, their building permit, but that's it. You can't, you don't track them forever and, oh, hey, I got you, I know you're the most popular, I don't know, Chick-fil-A in the world, and it's twice what we assess you. We can't do that.
And those, those formulas are coming out of an ITU trip generation manual for a litany of uses that Mike uses to come up with that, that traffic impact calculation.
Is that like a industry standard?
Right, so everyone's, everyone's, you know, operating under the same formula.
One thing that can't happen is, if they generate less, we have to give them money back. They can do a study, can you explain that?
Yeah, within, within, within a certain time period, and it's written in the ordinance and the regulations, if a, if a developer comes in tonight and you say, hey, this is going to be your impact fee, and they don't agree with it, they can pay the impact fee, get their building permit open, and then within that first year, if they come to us and say, hey, we want to do a study, we can do a, we'll scope out a trip study where we'll actually count the traffic, compare it to what they paid, and if there is a difference, we, we, we can refund.
Which we've had to do.
It's like when gas stations go out of, and we only have electric cars.
There's a time limit to that too, Lo, so it's only usually, I can't remember what it is, they get the first year of opening to, to appeal that, that number. So again, the gas station that's been around for 20 years, they're not going to be able to come back and say, give me a refund, so. So real quick, the last thing I want to do, direct your attention to, is Table 6 in the report, and what that does is, because we short-funded the entire program, to build the entire program would need about $90 million, which we're, we're never going to collect that much. We assign the fees in Table 6. If you look, there's a northern TSA in the middle, and then on the right side of the table, it says Southern TSA. The middle columns for each of those say assigned impact fee, and that's the fees, those are the projects that we're currently listing as funded. So in the northern TSA right now, like I said, McMurray and Beebout, Thompsonville has money assigned to it, Beebout and Sugar Camp, Sugar Camp and Brookwood, Sugar Camp and Churchill have money assigned to it. McMurray and the Peters Township Middle School driveway, if that project ever comes through forming a plus intersection, that has money allocated to it. Meredith Drive and Froby Road has money allocated to it, and Valleybrook and Beebout has money adjusted, allocated to it, and that's in the northern. In the southern, it's somewhat similar. McMurray and Beebout, Thompsonville has money allocated to it. Beebout and Sugar Camp has money, Waterdam and Galley, again, McMurray Road and the middle school slash old high school driveway, Just About and Sienna Trail, and Valleybrook and Beebout. And you're approving preliminarily this list of projects that are funded, but the manager's regulations allow Paul Lauer at any time to make an adjustment and take it to council. So say if PennDOT walks in and says, hey, we're going to build this project, and we don't have it funded on this list, this allows Paul and the regulations to take it to council, and you can't, you can't increase the numbers at the bottom of the page, but you can move money around in those columns to fund a project. So there's flexibility, but it's required that we pass a list of what's funded at every update. So again, where you guys are asking about, Waterdam and Galley is a funded project, it's on this list. McMurray and the middle school slash old high school would be a project, especially if that development comes through across from there. Just About and Sienna Trail would be a funded project since there's a pending development. The two PennDOT projects we talked about, there's money on here that can be immediately allocated if necessary for those projects. That kind of wraps up everything that I wanted to talk about tonight. Again, what you're, what you're being asked to approve is basically Tables 5, 6, 7 that are in the report, and increasing the impact fee from the 1,525 to the 1,600, if that's what your recommendation is. So if there's any more questions, that's all I have. Or if anything else, Seth or Ed, think I need to touch on?
So I'll kick this off by asking, does the audience have any questions or comments concerning this report and the recommendation?
I do.
Do you?
Yes.
Come on up to the podium, and there might be a sheet there to sign.
Yeah.
I believe.
Just no, oh, yeah. I'm Barb Chapman, I live at 150 Froby Road. With all the development that is going on around Froby, Sugar Camp, I mean, there's hundreds and hundreds of houses going in there, and you are talking, not doing anything with the road until, what, 2025, '27?
2027.
All those houses are going to have young kids that go to Bauer Hill School. What road do you think they're going to use to go to Bauer Hill School? They're going to use Froby. They're going to use Frobie Road. You have the plan coming out there, you have the houses that are on that road, it's just not acceptable. It needs to be pumped up, or, I mean, we'll be talking about the Frobie Farms thing, but it's just, that Frobie Road cannot handle that traffic, and especially that intersection on Sugar Camp and Frobie, which is basically a cliff, you know? And you're going to be having all these cars coming up there to take their kids to school. So, it's my concern.
Thank you.
And I'm Jake Chapman. I'm her husband. Question about the traffic, what sort of traffic study done on Frobie Road for this new, all the two new developments that are going on?
That's, that's... In terms of the actual Frobie Farms development, we'll talk about that later in the agenda for the...
I, I know, but we're talking about...
The answer is yes.
The answer is yes. They are required to do traffic studies for both of those developments.
Okay. All right, so we'll talk about that.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, I'll bring it back to the board. Anybody here have questions for Mike or concerns?
Well, is the 1600 a ceiling, or is...
16.
$1600 for the impact fee?
It's not a ceiling. I think Mike referenced what it could be.
$6,000.
$6,000. You know, we look at our comparative communities around the southwestern section of Pennsylvania. We try to, you know, be somewhere in the middle with all of them. We thought maybe Cranberry at 1800, and, or 1900 is a little bit too high, so, you know, we look at 1600 as a reasonable number. You certainly could make a recommendation for higher, if that's the consensus of the advisory committee.
I mean, so I'll just go on the record, I think I said it once, but I think that the 1600 is far too low. We are seeing a large number of residential developments coming into Peters Township, as long as, when those developments are proposed within the requirements of the MPC, and they meet those requirements, they are, they are, as the, as the MPC and as our local ordinance is required, those are, those are developments we're going to have to approve, with hopefully some changes, some things like that, when the developers will work with us. But the law is, is that if they come in and they're under the current regulations, we have to, you know, we have to approve them. When that happens, these are, they're right, that these are a lot of houses and a lot of people coming in, and if we're going to continue to develop the community, then I think that these projects that we're doing, it can't fall lag behind, and we need the infrastructure to be there. From a cost standpoint, I think that's why I asked a couple of the questions, and I confirmed that we're more like a Cranberry than we are like a Finley Township. We also have, the prices that are coming in for these houses are more like a Cranberry than they are a Finley Township. People are buying houses in, in these neighborhoods on smaller lots, and are willing to pay $600,000, $700,000 for them. If we were talking about a community where they were still building $200,000, $300,000 houses, and we were worried about the impact of that on people able to actually afford or buy a home, I would feel differently. But that's not the case here. People are buying $700,000 houses in this community without blinking an eye. So if that is where we are right now, and that's where we are with development in this community, then I think that we need to make sure that we have the funds that we need to do the improvements when they need to happen. And I don't see, I don't see any harm in us pumping these up a little bit more. I know that when there is a, the occasional commercial development, that it may seem high to them, I recognize that. But that's not what we're seeing, and that's, we have to, in my opinion, address the circumstances that we see now in the community that we're living in. They did a great job. I've got three kids who have gone through, you know, the school system, or going through the school system, and the putting in that roundabout, having the, the funds and the ability to widen those roads and do what they need to do, that has made that area very nice. If we're going to have these, I would like to be able to see those on some of these, you know, backroads and other roads as well. I live on Bee Belt, you know, a lot of the stuff is going on in that area, and that's going to happen. We're going to have development in our communities. People are allowed to sell their land and do it, as long as they comply. But I think that what we can ask, and I don't think we need to worry about the cost of that on an overwhelming basis, because it's going to get passed along to those buyers. If it hits a little bit of developers, then that is what it is. But I would like to see this. I would like to see it pumped up to at least 1700, and if it were me alone, I'd recommend 1750. Because we don't know where these construction costs are going to continue to go. I read article after article about where they are, and I don't, I don't want to see us wishing we had done, we had, we had done it, you know, next year, and we've lost a full year. So that's, that's where I stand on it.
Very good, well, thank you. Mike, if, are you able to estimate what the traffic impact fee would have been for calendar year '22, had we increased the traffic impact fee from 15 and a quarter to 1600, effective January of 2022?
You mean the funds that we would have collected?
Correct.
I mean, in, in theory, yeah, we could go back and look at those, those traffic impact fee checks and calculations that we got in last year, and we could, we could bump that number up from...
You don't know that right now?
I don't know that number off the top of my head, no. And, thank you, Rochelle. I don't, I want it to be clear, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, any, you know, plan that we're looking at tonight, they applied under the 1525.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, we can't...
I'm just using that, what's happened now is going to happen.
Just like there's only one.
Absolutely, no, no, that's clearly understood.
No.
But...
Future project.
But why wait?
I understand.
The committee can recommend whatever traffic impact fee number you think is appropriate.
Up to $6,000.
Any other comments on that line, that line of thinking, to raise it?
I mean, we'd always, in the past, for the committee, we always tried to keep it in line, you know, with other surrounding communities. I mean, we did go back and look at that over the years, you know, especially up north, a lot of our developers here in the south have developments up in the north, and we tried to keep those competitive at all times, because, you know, that does, I mean, to your point, I mean, you know, that fee really just gets passed on to the buyers out there in the marketplace. I mean, you know, when we've had, you know, developers in here, like Ted Taylor and those guys, complaining about the fees, but, you know, we ultimately know that gets passed on to the buyers at the end of the day, so. But the goal is, you know, we think it's important to keep it in line with, you know, what the competition is in the marketplace, and especially because, you know, they do develop in a lot of these other communities up north as well.
And for me, I mean, I, not, obviously not the commercial corridor, the commercial corridor in Cranberry is much larger than the commercial corridor in Peters Township, but the residential corridors, as far as the, the communities that are being built, the subdivisions that go in, the size of the houses, the cost of the houses, I mean, I would put ours probably higher than what they are in, in pockets of Cranberry Township, sure. But in overall, tell me the last time a development came in where we were pricing houses out of $300,000. It's probably since I've moved here. So, that's my point.
I'm going to throw this real quick to the staff, and maybe Rochelle, you'd like to just make a motion for this one little item, that we could kind of get a, a measurement of how we feel. Staff that recommended the 1600, do you see any real kickbacks or negative negativity to the one 1700, 17 and a quarter? You know, you guys, you want to...
I don't expect it to be much of an issue.
Would it be, if we're more than that far, if Cranberry's 18, could we match Cranberry?
I think they're saying we can propose whatever we want to propose. It's just, yeah. I did have just another question about, about...
So, just in response to the one audience member, is there, so, making a presumption that if those developments that are being talked about right now would go through in the next six months, let's just say, is my understanding that you would want those developments to be completed before we would do, I'm sorry, before we would do the improvements? I'm just, I'm asking about the improvements to Frobie Road, and those areas that, that were asked about by the audience, and I know we have those pushed out to 2028. So just from a, I would think that part of the reason we would maybe want, we would want to wait until at least construction was completed of those developments, before we would want to make an infrastructure improvement, so there's no damage, there's no, there's no issues with the large trucking things coming in. But I also acknowledge that, that is a decent point. That's going to be a big difference, and I don't know that anybody wants to wait four years for that to happen.
I'll just start by...
Yeah.
Mike, and you can jump in, but we're talking about the Frobie Farms development, 170 lots?
170 lots.
That'll develop over a five, six-year period.
So they're being done in phases?
Correct.
It's a two-phase project.
Okay.
So there, you've got to think about that, too.
Gotcha.
And just to construct that number of lots, and that number of homes is going to take a number of years.
So do we have a thought on, is there, is that like 2026, is that 2025, or we're going to be in 2023?
I mean, to be honest with you, if the, if the project isn't on the list with money, it's, it's in line.
Right.
So the new project that we're adding here at Frobie and Sugar Camp?
Right.
We're adding it to the list because we're recognizing it as a problem.
Sure.
But it's not funded.
It's not funded yet.
So, I mean, I, you know, the, we're putting a year on it, but I don't have confidence that we're going to get to that year unless something comes along, or unless you, or council, or Paul reprioritizes the list, moves that up above other things. Because again, we're talking about, you know, Water Dam and Galley, we're talking about Frobie Road, the Frobie Farms development, their impact fee is going to be going to Frobie and Meredith, and the road improvements we're going to see on that project.
Right.
Tuscany, we're going to see tonight, you saw a project down there. Their money's going to be going to the project that's right at their development.
Sure.
So, in reality, there's only about $200,000 in the impact fee fund right now.
Yep.
And if some of these projects go through, their, their developments are creating improvements on the project list, so their impact fee is going right to those projects. So the impact fee fund's not increasing.
Right.
But projects are going to get done by developers, because, just by the nature of them being right on top of the project, and we're working to get those projects done.
Yeah, gotcha.
And there's probably four projects on that list that would be developer-driven, because they're immediately on top of the developer. So in reality, we're going to go through these four big developments that we're talking about, but the impact fee money is not going to be increasing. We're only going to have $200,000 at the end of this all.
For those, right.
The project over at Frobie and Sugar Camp, I mean, there's a, there's a very sizable house there. We're not taking anybody's house, but to do that project over there because of the topography, there's probably about a $400,000 to $500,000 retaining wall that would need to be built to bring that intersection up, and that's just the retaining wall. So you can imagine, it's probably another $300,000 to $400,000. So it's about a $900,000 project, and unfortunately, there's no developer on that corner, because it's two houses there now, so we can't get a developer to buy in as part of their development.
Sure.
So what I'm, that's a long way of saying, it's on there, but someone would have to prioritize that above other projects.
Gotcha. And as I understand from your discussion earlier with Table 5, to the extent we pass this, this is just passing it based upon the requirements of the MPC that we pass it.
Correct.
But money, whether it's through recommendations from us, or reprioritizing by the Board of Supervisors, this money can be moved around...
Yes.
If somebody decides it needs to be.
Yes.
So this isn't a hard date for 2028?
No.
It's not a hard date before or after?
Correct.
This is just where we are at this moment, right? Okay.
And, and again, this, what this, what the whole chart is meant to do is to guide you. If there's, if there's some type of pot of money that comes out of state government level, that there's money that's going to fund X number of project, this is your project list. You go right to it. That puts you in the running for those types of grants. So, again, it has to be prioritized, and the money has to be pursued.
Okay, yep, okay. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment on that, just, and I'm just using that Frobie as a, as an example, 170 lots. You know, at, at $100 more per lot, that's $17,000 in highway construction, that's like gone in a day. So, it's not that, it's not that huge of a, of a bump.
How about a show of hands for the commission members up here, who would agree to, well, 1700, just a show of hands, if we agree to that? You good with that, Rochelle, maybe even more?
I want 17, I mean, I'm not, I'm not holding out, but I think 1750.
Well, we would just need a motion, a recommendation.
Make a motion for one of the...
Yeah.
If you want to do that, you're going to make a motion to recommend the whole...
No, 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 we're, we're just talking about that first line item. We're just trying to figure out where we want to be, 17 or 1800. So let's just look at that.
I was thinking you could do a motion with the entire thing, with a...
Included, said.
Including a...
So, yeah.
You can do the entire, right, I can, we can, we can roll it up. We can roll it up.
Right. The only, the only thing I would, would say is that you're going to recommend adopting Tables 5, 6, and 7 of the report, plus whatever impact fee number, with the condition that Tables 5, 6, and 7 will need to be updated with the new number that you pick. So I, this is all on a nice spreadsheet, will take me 10 minutes, but I got to go plug in.
Right.
What you recommend to update these charts, so it's going to change all these numbers at the bottom, but I think you all have the gist of...
Gotcha.
What this all does.
Okay, well, why don't I try it, and if we decide that I bungle it, I can, I can retry it again.
That'll be up the set.
I can retry it again.
I'll leave that up the set.
Okay.
Bungle the bungee?
Bungle, bungle it, right, okay. So I will make a motion that in connection with the impact fee discussion for 2020, 2022, that the Planning Commission, Planning Commission recommend approval of Tables 5, 6, and 7, and adopting an impact fee number of 1750, so that's $1,750, and asking staff to update Tables 5, 6, and 7 to reflect an impact fee of 1750, instead of the 1600, which is included, which is how the...
How it was calculated.
How it's currently calculated.
Do we have a second? I think she got it.
That wasn't the best way, that wasn't my best, but...
Ten seconds. All right, any more discussion on this item?
Make that comment.
And this is really just a recommendation to council for their...
Correct.
Yeah, that's right.
Approving it here.
Okay. Any more discussion? Have those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Those opposed? Y'all have a seat?
Seven, zero?
Seven, zero.
Was it seven?
Six.
Six.
Six. Thank you very much. That concludes our traffic impact fee advisory portion of the meeting.
So, Mr. Dolan, Mr. Slosky, you're welcome to stay, but you don't have to. But it's up to you. We're going to flow into our regular meeting now.
All right. Under due business, we have Item D, Planning Commission recommendation, Hoffbauer subdivision at 222 and 224 Springdale Road.
Okay. Mark Hoffbauer, Hoffbauer owns a property next to his parents, Henry and Daria Hoffbauer, at 220 Springdale Road and 291 Sienna Trail, as you can see highlighted up there on the map. The plan is, this is a simple lot line shift. The property at 220, Mark Hoffbauer's property, is going to get larger and it'll be 1.024 acres, L-shaped. The property remaining in blue, his parents' property, goes down to slightly over half an acre. No new lots are being created. It's a simple lot line shift. Staff's recommending we approve the plan subject to the three conditions listed in my report. Condition number four needs to come off. I worked that out.
Okay.
So it's just conditions one, two, and three.
All right. That's pretty very simple, a nice, simple agenda items. Anybody have any comments or concerns?
The, what did you think from the audience here?
Any audience comments for this one here? Do you have some? You're welcome to come up.
Hi, my name is Joel Ross. I live at 221 Springdale Road. However, for the previous 27 or 28 years, just for the record, I lived at 105 Meredith Drive and I still own that house too. So I'm here for two purposes tonight, to observe. But my comment on this location here is that there was significant flooding going on right in that square area there, just on the other side of our driveway there, that happened when a water line broke. And I'm just wondering, what is the water company's lines like there? Because it was a big mess and our road, Springdale Road, was closed off because it was completely blown out and they dug it all out. I mean, I don't need to explain that, right? So do we have sufficient water piping in here, like a water main? And also what kind of drainage? Because I believe at the back street of Mr. Bonn Hoffbauer's house, that wasn't there considerable flooding in there?
That was taken care of years ago. I don't know anything about the water line breaking and what kind of lines the water company has there. This has no impact on that whatsoever.
Okay. Well, I just wondered if we needed a plan for any kind of grating or drainage? That's why I'm asking. But you're not even aware of that water main break causing any flooding?
No. But they fixed it and we're not getting any complaints. We're not getting any complaints about any water problem there at this point in time.
I thought, none of our other neighbors are here for Springdale Road that I know of. So I just thought I'd ask the question, not as a concern or certainly not as a complaint exactly, but just to make sure that we don't have our road closed off again with another insufficient drainage. But you're saying that there was not an insufficient drainage problem when that water main broke?
When a water main breaks, you can't design for that. Water's going to run everywhere.
Yeah, true. Okay. All right. Just thought I would bring that up here since it was my opportunity here. I didn't come here for really getting into that at all, so. Okay, there's no concern on the township's part there? Okay.
No.
Certainly it doesn't affect us. We're uphill from that, but just wondering. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other concerns or questions about the lot line shift for this agenda item from the audience? Any commission questions for staff?
I just have a question. Do you have Peters Creek sanitary approval? Is there something up with the sanitary?
I don't think, just, we wanted to look at it and make sure that there's, all the easements are addressed. But the authority, Peters Creek, has looked at it and I'm not, I don't think they have any issues. They've not brought any issues to my attention.
Okay.
I just, I have a question about increasing. If I'm understanding this correctly, lot one becomes a one-acre lot, right?
1.024 acres.
Right. Okay. So does that, is there any thought or concern that then a further request for a subdivision for that to be, that makes that lot ability, it could be technically subdivided into two lots? Is there access for that able to happen? Or that somebody's looking to use that to then do a further subdivision down the road?
No.
I can't, I'm just having, I, there's no access areas.
I'm not aware of that.
Are you asking, could it be a flag lot down the road?
Right. Right.
Actually, I have access to Sienna Trail right there.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we weren't...
It wouldn't be, you could do that and it would be fine.
Does Mark inherit the shed? Does he inherit the shed?
I think that's his shed, Dave, already.
That's kind of the point of this. He's helping out his mother. He's been helping her out for years. It's, I guess, just basically giving him his mother money. He's going to subdivide it once the shed. There is a garage access on the backside, but he has no intentions of putting a second road. At this time, there's no intention of doing another subdivision.
Right.
If he were to do that, he would have to buy zoning at that time if he were to want to subdivide it in the future. But there is no future plans to subdivide it. This is just literally, he's going to take a little bit more property to help his mother out. That's the scenario we're in.
Okay.
Any other questions from the commission? Can you guys do it?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that the Hoffbauer subdivision is outlined in staff's memo dated October 20th, 2022, including the three conditions set forth to be approved.
On the motion, do we hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Those who approve, say yea.
Yea.
Yea. Anybody opposed? Passes unanimously. Item C, Planning Commission Recommendation for Tuscany Two. It's a preliminary plan at Just About Road.
This would be a Planning Commission Recommendation to council for a preliminary plan for the Tuscany Two development adjacent to the Tuscany One development. This development would be located near the intersection of Just About Road and Sienna Trail. It's kind of been a point of conversation here this evening in regard to the traffic impact fee, CIP update for 2022. This is a low-density residential zone property that also can utilize the conservation residential overlay for development. It's a 56-acre parcel of land and we are seeing, yeah, across both sides of Just About Road. What we're seeing tonight is the proposed development of 32.9 acres on the northern half of Just About Road. And it would be a 37-lot development within that acreage. So that puts us at about a 1.12 density calculation in terms of dwelling units per acre, well within the allowances provided for the conservation residential overlay. A series of lot sizes, from 12,000 square feet at the smallest to one and a quarter acre at the largest, kind of hovering around the three-quarter acre, a third of an acre mark for the majority of the lots. I do have a couple of proposed lots that would have direct access to Just About Road, situated on opposite side of open space from the majority of the development. Those lots in particular, because they would be accessing a state road, would require individual PennDOT Highway occupancy permits prior to construction. As we've talked about this evening, we're in conversations with the developer about a traffic impact fee improvement at the intersection of Just About Road and Sienna Trail. Looking at realigning that per the graphic that was shown in the CIP update. If that project were to be completed by the developer, it would likely supersede or secede those traffic impact fee costs for those developments so they wouldn't have to pay a traffic impact fee on top of performing that improvement. But we see that as a serious improvement in this area, kind of teeing up that intersection and making it the geometry much more reasonable in this area. In terms of stormwater management and open space for development, we've got a stormwater management facility located at the southeast section of the property that would collect the runoff from all of the roads and open space parcels, roof drains, everything throughout the development, ultimate discharge, and a creek that runs through the property. Sanitary sewer service would be an extension of an existing sanitary sewer line that was constructed as part of Tuscany One, just off of this parcel. So it would be continued through development and then carried down to Just About Road to serve as future development on the other side of Just About Road. We have open space in excess of the requirements in the CR overlay and they're at a proposed 32% of the total gross tract acreage. They're required 25%. They're proposing just over 10 and a half acres of total combined open space. In terms of the actual proposed homes, these would be Benjamin Marcus homes. And we're hearing from the developers, starting around $800,000 and up as a continuation of the products provided for in Tuscany One. I have Mike Wetzel here this evening from Victor Wetzel, who's working on behalf of the property owner. He can answer any questions you have and I'm happy to answer any questions that the Planning Commission has as well. Staff is making a recommendation of approval for the Tuscany Two preliminary plan, subject to the 17 conditions as outlined in my report to the commission dated October 20th, 2022.
Thank you, Seth. Mike, you have any opening?
As always, Seth does a great job in regard to presenting our projects. But no, just in general, I just want to point out, yes, this is a CR overlay zoning and design. But really, we are designing the plan more to the, you know, low-density residential district throughout the site. You know, as a point of reference, our smallest lot size is only 97 feet wide. But when you take all of our lots together, the average is 127 feet wide, well in excess of even the low-density zoning district. And really, when you take, in regards to all the lots that are here, there are more half-acre lots when you take the average of all those. So we're not looking to do the minimum 75-foot-wide lots. We're really, once again, same builder in regard to doing, Tuscany is doing Tuscany Two. It's just a continuation of the homes. Sorry, it's not a $300,000 home that we've seen in the past, but...
No, I'm saying we haven't seen those.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying.
But it's just really an extension of Tuscany and really designed for more large lots, but just taking advantage of the CR zoning district, more in regard to some of the front setback line areas. In regard to some of the improvements that have been discussed here, we've been in constant communications with the township in regard to that alignment and we have no issues in regards to providing the necessary right-of ways for it. And in regard to the 17 items, we all agree in regard to providing those conditions as part of the preliminary plan recommendation.
So that improvement that's proposed for the intersection, does that 100% fall on the developer?
It could, yeah. And, you know, part of the benefit there, with it being part of a capital improvement project is that, you know, they're eligible to have their traffic impact fees counted as a credit towards that project. So if they carry through with the project, then they are not obligated to pay any additional traffic impact fees.
And I guess that's a temporary cul-de-sac up there.
Yeah, I wanted to make mention of that as well. This would be a temporary cul-de-sac. This is Simmons Farm property off to the west. You know, this is something we do in all of our residential developments where there's the opportunity to do it. We're facilitating circulation and connection to adjacent properties for future development if they should choose to develop.
Is this property also part of Simmons or is it charitable?
This was part of the Haven Farm.
Simmons used to farm it or may, they don't farm it anymore. They used to lease it.
So once again, under this, under the zoning, we could have gotten 80 to 90 lots on this property if you followed through the CR once you had worked just at 37 lots, even under the density requirements, the low residential development district.
Any particular school bus stops or issues going through the plan? Or is that...
Ed, help me remember our conversation with the school district. I can't remember if they were going to go into this plan or not. I think it was...
It's designed so that the buses could.
It could really do the loop through the two plans.
Yep.
So.
We talk with them on all of our potential projects. We look at them together and say, would you like to go through this one? Do you want to stop at the front of this one? Those are always subject to change anyways.
Of the 37, how many are half an acre or more?
Let's see here. I looked at this the other day. I think it was eight or nine.
Eight or nine?
Yeah. At half an acre or more, yes. A lot of them hovered around that third of an acre.
Yeah. As we calculated, when we took all phases, one, phase two, the average lot size was 20,500, just under.
Yeah, it's just under half an acre.
And the largest one is one?
One and a quarter.
One and a quarter acres.
And those lots are situated at the end of this shorter cul-de-sac. These three lots are the larger of the three.
Okay. And you did that just based on what the topography and what would make nicer?
Correct. As well as, once again, provided the open space area, I think we're a little over two acres of open space, more than the 25%. It could have been very easy to extend some of those lot lines throughout the plan, but we thought it'd be best to keep that in open space.
You're at 1.12?
Dwelling units an acre.
Yes.
That's low density.
Yep.
Everything that the board was looking at under a couple of months ago for their comments.
Yeah.
Let me take a minute to ask the audience if they would have any comments or concern questions at this time, please, as much as a question. Come on up and just state your name again for this item.
Once again, my name is Joel Ross. Just a simple question. And I'm at 221 Springdale Road. Has the builder been selected yet for this proposed property development?
It would be the same builder as Tuscany.
Benjamin Marcus.
Yes.
Okay. Didn't know who it would be. Thank you.
Welcome.
Anybody else with a question or concern for the staff? Is Mike? Nothing?
Nope.
Questions?
Nope.
Stormwater's all good, right?
Yeah, we're under preliminary approval at this point. We'll be coming in for final approval later on.
I'll make a motion that the Tuscany Two preliminary plan is outlined in staff's memo dated October 20th, 2022, including the 17 items, recommendations, or conditions, I should say, be approved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And seconded, those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item D, on new business, we have Planning Commission Recommendation, Frobie Farms, preliminary plan on Frobie Road.
This is preliminary plan recommendation to council for the Frobie Farm and 87.3-acre parcel of land located around the intersection of Frobie Road and Meredith Drive. The property is a low-density residential. It also has the conservation residential overlay on top of it. The preliminary master plan includes a total of 170 lots across the 87 acres, putting us at 1.9 dwelling units an acre, which is under the two dwelling units an acre at the lowest end of the CR overlay allowance in terms of density. Regarding open space, they're required 25% open space in the development. They are proposing a total of 30% of open space, 26.3 acres proposed, 21.8 acres would be required. The proposed development includes a number of new roads situated across two phases. The first phase of development, which we would see as part of the first, you know, final plan, is this Loop Road and the reconstruction/realignment of the intersection of Frobie Road and Meredith Drive. As we talked about earlier tonight, the Frobie Road-Meredith Drive intersection is a project on the Township's Capital Improvement Program. So any improvements associated with that would be eligible for reimbursement or a credit for their traffic impact fees. And the developer has committed to us, at this time at least, to proceed with those improvements, to get a T-intersection, the intersection of Frobie and Meredith, and then a reconstruction of Frobie Road, you know, to make, to cover up that gap. These homes utilize a 42-foot right-of-way, 25-foot front yard setbacks. That, all taken into consideration, would put each home about 34 feet off the back of the curve of each new roadway. The proposed lot sizes in the plan range from a quarter acre in size to a third of an acre in size. They're much more consistent and pretty regular throughout the entirety of the development. And we're including three cluster mailbox locations throughout the development, one in the first phase and two in the secondary phase. The secondary phase does include lots along Frobie Road as well that would have direct frontage on Frobie Road. Stormwater management includes two, three stormwater management facilities throughout the development. There would be two in the first phase and one in the second phase. All of those stormwater management facilities would be designed to discharge into streams that are located on the property. Sanitary sewer service for the development is intended to service the development from an extension of the Peters Creek Sanitary Authority Sanitary Sewer Line, which is situated all the way at the southern end of the 1781 Club Golf Course. It's not shown on the screen here, but it's way off-screen at this point. Before we are comfortable taking this preliminary plan to council, after Planning Commission makes a recommendation tonight, we're going to want to see some further security of that actual easement in place to make sure that that sanitary sewer has a place to go to service its development. We don't want to get too much further along and not have an easement needed to continue this project and service these homes with sanitary sewers, which is obviously very important. The sanitary sewer lines, as part of both Phase One and Phase Two, predominantly Phase One, are intended to permit or facilitate a future connection for the six lots. This one's a vacant lot here. And there's one, two, three, four, five other lots that have either driveways on Meredith or Frobie Road, granting them sanitary sewer access. Those lots currently operate on septic systems. We want to give those homes the availability to have sanitary sewers. So we're going to facilitate that as part of this development, as part of the sanitary sewer configuration throughout the plan. The proposed homes in the development anticipate a cost between $715,000 to $850,000 in total cost. Builder at this time, I believe it's Eddie Holmes. It could be a combination in the future of other builders as part of this plan. We're seeing street trees, sidewalks, all throughout the development, buffers along Frobie Road. We're asking that they increase the setback for the lots on Frobie Road to accommodate that, you know, there aren't direct access on Frobie Road. So get them a little bit further off Frobie to act as an additional buffer. along Frobie to act as an additional buffer. And then we have some some pictures of the homes that are proposed to be as part of this plan. We have the applicant's engineer here tonight to answer questions that the planning commission has. I'm happy to answer any questions you have as well. Staff is making a recommendation that the Frobie Farms preliminary master plan be approved, subject to the 15 conditions outlined in my October 21 report.
Thank you, Seth. Is the, you said the engineer is here?
Yes.
Would you mind coming up and introducing yourself? I'm sure there's might be a question or two for you.
Sure, absolutely. Good evening, John Schleicher with AMS Engineering. And just to to further set a presentation, which was very thorough, you know, we have been working with with township staff for probably over a year at this point. I know we had some informal meetings back in late 2021. We actually met with the the staff, Mr. Zomitis, the house engineer, Mr. Mudry, back in February to take a look at the overall development plan and traffic and just some of the questions and concerns. And the first thing that that staff, you know, brought up was the Meredith Drive intersection with with Frobie Road. It it comes off at a a pretty sharp, severe angle, and it has limited site distance looking to the south. So that was one of the one of the things they staff first wanted to work through, which, as mentioned, we incorporated a, I think, a pretty creative design.
Hey, John, can you just walk us through what you're doing to realign?
Sure.
That intersection?
Yeah.
Do you have a highlight?
Here, John.
I have a pointer.
There you go.
Yes, so here's Frobie Road.
Existing.
Existing Frobie Road running south to north, Meredith Drive lies off here, angles off here, up toward Peterswood Park. So the there's a high point in Frobie Road in this vicinity. So the distance to the existing intersection from the high point is below what would be the the required site distance or definitely, you know, the ideal site distance. And site distance is one of those things where the more, the better. There's not a, you know, point of dimensioning returns, the more, the better. We looked at making this a plus intersection with the with the planned road and maybe redoing some of Frobie Road. There's a couple of gas lines that that cross Frobie Road here that would prohibit, you know, lowering that high point. You know, in addition, that would have, you know, more of an impact on on some of the neighbors on the west side of of Frobie. So again, what we came up with is, you know, a T intersection that will straighten out Meredith Meredith Drive, take some, take a kind of reverse curve out of it and tee it off with Frobie, where I believe that would be a three-way stop is the recommendation from from the traffic engineers. And then the planned roads would would tie into different locations of New Frobie and, you know, what I'll call Old Frobie Road.
What's the distance between right there?
Yes.
Between the two roads coming into Meredith?
250 feet approximately. Yeah, and again, just to to tie in elsewhere with the planned road, there is a a kind of drainage course that runs down through here that's that's being left undisturbed. So to tie in any further down is prohibited by some environmental constraints and topography. And obviously tying in any further south would, you know, just kind of bring us back to the to the site distance limitations and condition at that existing location. There's there's sufficient separation between these two intersections from a local road design standpoint.
What's the speed limit on those road?
25, yeah.
And all intersections would have a stop? They're all stops except for the the Frobie, the Frobie would be a straight through or what's?
On Frobie Road, the realigned Frobie Road, the only stop sign on actual Frobie would be the three-way stop at Meredith. The other three intersections going up Frobie, only the side streets would be stops, and then coming down, existing Frobie at the bottom of the page, that intersection would only be the side street stop.
So I'm coming up Frobie from the bottom of the the display there, make a right turn onto Frobie, or is that, that's Meredith right there, right?
Well, if Frobie's going to come up and then Frobie's going to turn to the right where he's pointing, Meredith is to the left into the park.
Okay, so you turn, you come up Frobie, turn right on Frobie, and then that's the last stop sign you see till you get to?
Sugar Camp.
Sugar Camp.
Correct. And I think part of it is that, you know, the the speed limit's 25. We're going to build homes along there with sidewalk. It's going to make it, instead of a farm road that it looks like today, they're not only going to, they're not going to, even on the part where they're showing existing road, they're going to, they're going to construct that out to the updated standard too. So they're reconstructing that whole road through there. So it's going to have a totally different look. It's going to look like on Frobie Road that you're driving through a neighborhood with landscaping and sidewalks and the houses. We did say they're going to be a little bit further back, but they're still houses facing Frobie, so.
So that'll, that part of that would be a lot like, what is it, where Turkey Foot goes from Bebaut up to Churchill? There's a couple, like Iron Horse comes off of that, and there's a couple.
Right.
You drive straight through.
And and the good thing that John had mentioned too, we can't really fix the oversight distance there because of the the gas lines running through. We're lengthening it out, so we're making it a longer site distance because we're throwing the intersection up further. And like John said, if we try to bring, if we would try to keep that existing intersection and lower the road, not only are you worried about the gas lines, but you'd be in other folks' yards there on the left side coming up. You, I don't think you could do the lowering the road without impacting those homes on the left side. So I think that this this kind of checking off a lot of issues that we identified out there, to coming up with a good plan that I think John has really been, you know, helpful in working through this and been real receptive to some of the input.
What's the elevation change from where the for that portion of Fro, the new Frobie? You know, when you come, when you pick up Meredith to where you're hitting that first?
Right here, Ted?
From from there to the right, to there, yeah. What's is it, what's the grade change there? Is it fairly flat?
It is, it is. It's fairly gentle, 5%.
You can, you can go out there today, you know, when you, if you're coming from the top of screen and you're making, you're going to make that right on Meredith, if you look over your back shoulder, there's like a little flat depression there, and that's roughly where.
That's where I'm imagining it, yeah. So that'd be fairly decent spot to make that. Yeah, because that house that's up there on Meredith right before you get into the park?
Yep.
It kind of, that's where it peaks at? That's your place? Yeah.
That's my place, and there's all kinds of gutters that come down. The driveway would have to be re routed, and we have a sand mound.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask you to come up in a couple of minutes. Couple more questions. Is this whole plan a gravity feed? Will be gravity for the?
For the sanitary sewers? I believe that's the plan, John.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, everything is designed as gravity sewers, and if you go back to that area, I think you can catch that. You can kind of get a get a gist of the of the topography here. There's a drainage course that runs through the middle of the site from west to east, and another headwaters of a drainage course that runs north to south, and they converge here to make more of a perennial stream that heads down through the golf course. And the sanitary sewer tie-in, as Ed or Seth mentioned, is further to the south here. So we're working with the golf course owner for for an easement to gravity sewer all that. Gravity sewers will extend up through here to serve Phase Two, then cross in here to service Phase One. And we are providing an easement from our last manhole in those in those last lots coming in, an easement to serve one of the residents on on Frobie Road to the west. The other five properties, one, two, three, four, five, can be serviced by gravity sewers, which we will extend up to the last lot in the plan. And then also with the relocation of Meredith Drive, we're, we're providing new right-of-way. There's the opportunity to, you know, run a sewer in the old Meredith Meredith Drive right-of-way so so that none of the existing residents would be dependent, you know, on others for easement or anything else. That could be done with is in what's currently, you know, public right-of-way and then at the township's, you know, discretion could, you know, dedicate that that property to the to those residents. So, so, yes.
On that realignment of Meredith, is part of the developer's responsibility to extend driveways? Can you just talk about that a little bit?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, so so any of the improvements associated with the realignment are entirely on development property. There's no, no grading, no disturbance on any existing, you know, private property. There, there will be some, you know, grading within the existing Meredith Road right-of-way to to transition, but nothing outside of existing or, you know, the existing right-of-way or developer right-of-way, we'll call it. And with that, yeah, some, some driveways will be extended to to meet up with with the new roadway. Grade-wise, they, you know, there's, there's not a whole lot of, you know, elevation going on. It'll be similar to to the grade that they're at or reflect the driveway extension. And that kind of, you know, the the cooperation between the developer and the township, you know, is really what makes a project like this work. You could have all the, you know, the the impact fees and so forth, but but getting the new right-of-way is the real value, you know, to 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 the township and into the community, which is why, you know, developer is more than willing to, you know, work, work with the township on that. Another, another thing, and I'll just be another couple of minutes, I wanted to just elaborate on on a couple of things that Seth already went over in his, in his review is the open space requirement for the two dwelling acres per, or two dwellings per acre density is 25%. We're over 30%. So there's approximately five to six acres additional open space being being proposed than the the minimum required. And with that, if you could zoom out a little bit, Seth, I think this makes, it makes the development unique. Every lot, 170 lots, all but one abut open space. The one, the only one that does it is in the corner here, and I kind of gave a lot of thought to that. Would you be, would we want to add a strip of open space somewhere just to say that, you know, that that all lots abut open space? But then you don't want a strip of of land where it could possibly be unmaintained. So again, I just think it's the unique thing that that every lot but, you know, that just about every lot abuts open space, so, you know, they have access to it both physically and, you know, the the aesthetic value to that.
This plan doesn't touch Peterswood Park.
No. It's close, it's close.
Nearby, it's close.
Is that where the ball fields are, the baseball fields?
See the edge of the park there.
Right there's the edge.
Wasn't there another plan that went right in?
Pemberley Manor.
On Sugar Camp, they're doing an access road into the park.
Real quick, what jumped out at us was no, no cul-de-sacs. You see that? Everything connects and flows and?
We have two connector roads into the golf course. That wherever to be developed, there's points of access available?
Actually, three.
Two truce.
Yeah, that's a power line.
Up, up.
So there's a road running right along the edge of the property there?
Correct.
Our minimum setback requirement is what? Is it 25?
25 feet.
So it's what we have here?
Yep.
It puts it 34 feet from the edge of the road.
Okay. And then the the 24-foot cartways, is that, is that one of the, is that the standard or is that?
Lanes, two-foot wedge curb on each side.
Okay.
Then a green strip, five-foot sidewalk, and then the remainder is either in the right-of-way or then you've got through the property line.
But 24-foot is, I know we've had some discussions in the past has been?
24-foot's the standard.
We changed that.
Okay.
We went, it was 20 and we bumped.
And we went back to it. Okay, okay. All right, that's why I just recalled conversations. I just wasn't sure which way we went on it, right?
So where does the setback start with respect to the road?
So beyond the?
So if you've got a 42-foot cartway, you've got a 24-foot road, so you've got 18 feet left, nine foot on each side, so nine foot back from the edge of the road, if you don't don't think about the green strip or the sidewalk, that's going to be roughly the property line.
So the backside of the wedge curb?
And then, well, the backside of the edge wedge curb to the property line is nine feet, and you're 25 feet beyond that to the house.
Beyond that to the house.
34 foot side.
Got it, okay.
34 feet from the rear of the curb line.
Yeah.
Hey, John, one thing, you're showing sidewalks along Frobie Road, correct?
Correct.
Good. That'll slow folks down, and it'll, it'll have a different look and feel, and, you know, folks won't be speeding through there as much as they do today.
All right, let's take a break and have?
The whole, the whole thing is sidewalked on both sides, right? The whole development, right?
Let's, let's hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm going to take a break and ask the audience, one at a time, if you'd come up and state your name again, if you've already been up, and perhaps ask questions to everybody.
J. Chapman, 150 Frobie Drive, Frobie Road. It used to be drive when I grew up in the house in, in right now. I've lived here all my life. My grandparents lived here all their lives. I moved back into this house because I knew that from Rich Frobie, he told me that he was landlocked. He was trying to buy a lot off me so he could get sewers to his property. And so that's one reason I moved back from Giant Oaks. But anyway, I guess a few questions here. Is there storm drainage with your new road? And your, is there, is there storm drainage? Because we have no storm drainage. We have a big puddle in front of our, our driveways that I've been complaining about for a long time.
On Frobie Road?
On Frobie Road. Is the new development have storm drainage? There's a lot of, lot more runoff that's coming off of this hill with all your pavement and houses and so on and so forth. Where is that, where is that going?
Yeah, if you want to, if you want to take a look at the slide that Seth pulled up there, so, yeah, everywhere where you see the shading is where the roadways are being improved up to township road standards, which include curb and gutter and inlets every, you know, informality. So which which house is yours or which property?
One of these.
Right next to it.
It's right here, or I think, if you can move.
Leave it up?
Yeah. We're right adjacent to it right here.
Okay.
And my concern is, like I I mentioned before with the traffic study, is that road is being used as a crossroad from Sugar Camp to Bebaut to Byer Hill. I mean, I spend a lot of time in my front yard. I spent it tonight going leaves. I know how many cars turn into Oak Ridge that come up the road. I'd say 50% of the cars pass by and go all the way through. And if we add 170 houses, plus the Miranda houses at the end of the road, it's ridiculous. I mean, when I was cutting grass tonight, I'm, I'm right down there next to the edge of the road. Two cars are coming, and one has to stop because they're afraid they're going to hit me because I'm, I'm still on my yard, but the road isn't wide enough. It doesn't have, it doesn't have any side, but this is going to be nice with sidewalks on both sides, but what about the rest of the Frobie Road? I mean, kids in Oak Ridge are going to be friends with kids in this plan, and they're going to be walking down Frobie Road and be at risk. So I, Frobie Road needs to be improved if you're going to put 170 houses on Frobie Road. The S turns, I've been, you know, run off the road on the S turns at the end of the road. Just by improving the access to Sugar Camp is not improving Frobie Road for this kind of traffic, is my, my biggest complaint. And I, you know, I talked to you, Ed, about this plan before, and you said, well, they came back, they originally were just going to develop that 38 acres on top of the hill or whatever, and you said, no, that's, they have to come back with a master plan for the whole property. Well, when I met with Eclipse, Steve from Eclipse, he said that there's just a letter of intent for the? of intent for the other half of the property. So what happens if that falls through? Is this whole plan then fall through? Because you said we, you weren't going to accept anything but a master plan for...
Well, this is the master plan, and they have the entire 87 acres, they bought 40 acres, and they have the rest of it under agreement, which is what we do on all developments. If this developer would fall, if they would not do the development, is that what you're asking me?
Yeah, what happens if, you know, if it falls through the second half of the, they've already bought the first 38 acres or whatever next to me.
You're asking if the sale of the upper area would not go through, if the letter of intent would fall through?
We'd still have a master plan approved for the entire site, you know, that could change what we're seeing, but I just don't anticipate that happening at this time. And they could sell it to another developer, so...
And that's the big benefit of having the roadway improvement for Meredith and Frobie as part of Phase One. We're not relying on the secondary phase for that to take place. That would be priority as part of the first part of the project, and then if Phase Two were to fall through, whatever, for some reason, at least we got that intersection improvement.
So the improvements happen first before...
The improvements happen as part of Phase One.
The improvements happen before any houses or as any houses, those first set of houses go in.
Part of construction.
What improvements?
The ones we're talking about.
The Frobie Road improvements.
The Frobie Road and Meredith Drive intersection.
But not the end of Frobie, because that's 2027.
Correct.
Yeah, you're talking the intersections of Frobie and Sugar Camp and the intersections of Bauer Hill and Frobie?
Yeah.
And my, we, Peters Township can't require a developer to do off-site improvements. So all we can do is require that they improve their frontage.
I agree, but what's the township going to do to improve Frobie Road then? That's what, I guess...
Beabout to Meredith.
Yeah, Beabout to Meredith is the...
Beabout to Meredith.
Bauer Hill, Beabout.
Hit the end of, yeah, on the other side.
We have projects planned for Bauer Hill and Beabout and Sugar Camp and...
Yeah, what we're talking about is...
Ma'am, we're going to have to, just we have to address one person at a time, okay? So, yeah.
I guess what our concern is, is from Beabout to this new plan, what improvements are going to happen? Because they really do need to happen.
At this time, there are no planned improvements for the area between here and Beabout.
Okay. Well, I agree.
And just, just...
I was just going to say, just to clarify, the impact fee things that we talked about earlier are projects that get listed because of development-related. There's rules and regulations, what you can put on and things like that, and that's where Ed's correct. The piece below this is technically an off-site improvement. The project actually was just Meredith and Frobie. We've worked with John and his folks to include the entire stretch on the property now, which I think is an upgrade of what was, is on the impact fee, but you're correct. Once you get off of this property, except for that intersection project that we talked about tonight, Sugar Camp and Frobie, the S-bends up there between and then the bottom and going down to Beabout and Bauer Hill, they're not on a capital improvement plan right now. And because it's, because it's already developed down there and there's no development potential down there for right now, it would have to be a township project, it would have to go through the road program, like the paving program or something like that. It would have to go through council to add that as a capital project, unfortunately.
And with this development happening, we do roads every year, widen, resurface. You could come to council and ask that we consider the stretch from here to Beabout and a project in the next couple of years.
Well, I mean, he said the speed limit through his plan is going to be 25. Nobody goes 25. I mean, they fly through there. And what I'm concerned about, there's a lot of kids in Oak Ridge, and a lot of kids walk to the park and go to the trail, and they're, they're going to be at risk. They're at risk now, it's pretty bad. So I, you know, that's one reason I don't think that this should be approved until the infrastructure can handle something like this.
So sir, just to, just to make sure we're kind of responding to your specific issue, so where we are with here with, as the planning commission, and what has happened here so far is everything that goes in within the development that touches the property, you know, there's, there's rules and regulations, there's laws that are written down. So what our job is to make sure that the developer is complying with all of the written regulations that we have in place, as far as the distance and the numbers and everything you've heard us talking about. And then as far as anything that touches the property, you know, that's where the impact fee money can come from, but as far as the improvements that we can ask of the developer has to, have to be able to touch the property. So your points are well taken, but you're looking at things that, you know, that's one area and this is like, and this is another area, so...
So it's another meeting I need to come to.
Well, it's just, it's a different part of an approval process. Do you see what I mean, in the sense that like, what, I think what Mr. Zuck is saying is that if, when we, when another group meets to decide what, what roads are going to be improved, what, where, where we're going to repave, where we're going to widen, that's, that's a different entity. But one does not, they're not, they're mutually exclusive. Do you see what I mean?
All right.
And so, we can't, we can't depend this on something else that happens. We can, what we can do is make sure that everything in this development meets all of the requirements, and then we can do what we can to ask the developer to, for general purposes, to do other things. And I think that's what staff has been talking about, that, you know, where they, where they've moved this and they're working things through. So that doesn't mean that we don't understand where you're coming from. It means that from our jurisdiction, you know, and what we do and what our job is versus where something else is sitting, we can't necessarily say this, this development has to wait until this happens. We've got laws and rules and regulations that we have to follow as well, so...
Just one other question. I'm also concerned, since I'm on the lower, you know, on the bottom of the hill that you're going to be developing, about drainage. I know you have some swales that I think you showed on one of your drawings, and I'm sure you've done hydraulic studies to make sure that that is adequate for 100-year rains or whatever, right? Is that...
Yeah, all of the runoff from, from this site, and for the board's benefit, there is, I don't want to laser you, there's a high point in this vicinity here, so this, this road will drain down, you know, toward...
I'm talking about...
Toward Frobie, and then everything else naturally drains this way. But, that being said, all of, all of the site runoff is being controlled. There'll be a pair of inlets at the, at the entrance to the road here, and it'll possibly convey...
I guess what I'm concerned about, this is sloping from the road to my property. This is my property and my sister's properties all along here, so...
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were...
No, I'm right here.
Oh, you're here.
And these are our family properties right here.
Okay.
What I'm concerned about is the little runoff from the lots themselves down into our property.
Yes. I'm sorry, I just understood which, which property was yours. When you were, I was just assuming you were the one.
150.
Front of Frobie Road across, across from the site. No, a lot of these lots, some do, the natural topography is, is to the south, others, there's a ridge kind of along here as well. So some will naturally drain back toward the road, they'll be high-side type lots. Then all of the lots along here, all the rooftops, driveways, again, yards, will be collected and conveyed. There may be a little bit of residual...
Is there, is there going to be storm drainage on the low side of the lot then?
Generally, yeah.
Each new home will have direct access to Township's storm sewer system to be able to collect and discharge into the stormwater management facilities as part of the development. And in perpetuity, when people come in for decks or additions, we ensure that those projects tie into those storm drains so that we don't have any type of runoff that's negatively affecting adjacent property.
Okay. And then, just to jump back to another question you had about pedestrian, you know, accessing the park, there is sidewalk proposed to the southern boundary, you know, from, from this proposed roadway to the, to the boundary. There would be the opportunity to connect up to that. And, but, you know, I know, you know, we've worked with the township before, and other pedestrian-type access is amenities, especially when there, when there's a park, it's a, it's a, you know, a win-win, just the farms we...
Absolutely.
We work with them. So if there's an opportunity for another pedestrian connection, I know there's a cul-de-sac in Oak Ridge in this vicinity.
We should look at that and maybe get the kids that are in Oak Ridge through up through the open street. We'll look at that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's on my concern. I mean, not just for kids, for my wife and I too, when we go get the mail.
There you go.
So it's, it is a crazy road at this point, and I can't even imagine what it's going to be like with this, with this extra traffic. And it's about, plus the Maronda traffic also. So I guess that's another meeting, I guess is what I've been told. Let me put my name down here.
Can I just, from the phasing standpoint, you want, you'll complete all of Phase One before you even move to Phase Two? Or would, would some of it?
No.
You don't think, you're doing all of the same. I mean, I know the, I know the infrastructure, but I mean, as far as the building?
It would be largely completed.
Okay, before, but not...
What you want to do is you build out and not have any...
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So it would, it would follow along, depending on the market.
I just mean, when you're, when you're selling, you're not going to sell one house in Phase Two and then six in Phase, you're going to build out most of Phase One before you had moved to Phase Two?
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to come up and speak? Please come up and sign your name to the docket there and introduce yourself and where you live.
John Hughes Ash on 167 Frobie Road, on the log. Right here. I share a lot of the same concerns that Jay, we've talked just about the traffic and the number of houses that are going up in that area. I mean, if it is a super busy road, I'd say 5% of population stops at that stop sign, so if the road was to be moved and there was an actual stop sign, that would be a good thing. But it's, I guess my concern is, I mean, and maybe it's just a statement, I moved into the area about eight years ago. I was attracted to Peters Township, I'm not from this area. I was attracted, it was awesome park, awesome location, I got four little kids, lots of open space. For us, we, that's what brought us to Peters Township, was that we were not, that we didn't look at other townships that were spec homes after spec homes after just rows of houses, seas of houses as far as you could see. That's not why we came here. So, I mean, by the, there's nothing within the, I guess I'm just making a general statement that it was, it's unfortunate to see something like this with the amount of houses go in. It's, I mean, we've talked about wanting to move already, because, and I know, I mean, I asked the township, I've talked with Ed, he's been fantastic. It fits within all the jurisdiction of the number of acres and the housing locations, but, I mean, even the Tuscan, even what they presented earlier was like, that would have been much better, in terms of just the amount of traffic and people. I mean, it's going to totally flip our world upside down. So it's just a general statement, I mean, there's a lot of other stuff with the traffic and the drainage. I mean, we have half the drainage coming off that field right now that just goes right down through our yard. So there's going to be those types of things that we'll work through. I was curious if the committee ever considered ever, you know, repurposing that land over there. I mean, that land itself is prime real estate just within Peters. I mean, it is the hub of Venetia, of Peterswood Park, of, I mean, we spent a lot of money at Rolling Hills last year. You know, I don't know if there was ever an expansion for parks or courts or things from Peterswood Park or, I mean, I've looked at community service farms and stuff where you could just, I mean, once you lose that space, it's gone. There's not much left of it in Peters. I mean, it's a, it's a great farm. I knew Rich personally. He was a really good guy, and I know he liked the farm, he wanted to keep it for what it was. I mean, if you've ever, I went through, he made, when I moved there, he made me read the recount on Peters Township. It's like a 70-page thing from the library of what it is, the history, his farm. I read it, he made me. And it was, it's got a lot of history there. You know, that farm itself is the center point of it, it's just going to change the look and feel of the whole township, or really in that area, and what they're doing down the road too. Again, it fits within the rules, they bought the land, they can do what they want, and there's not much more I can possibly argue and say here. I didn't know if there was options to do anything outside of developing or, or what we had, but it's, it's heartbreaking, quite frankly, so...
The one thing that, all your points are well taken, but as you said, once they, you know, they bought the land, they can do that, the owner of that land is permitted to sell that land as well. And so they, you know, regardless of, you know, I'm sure what Mr. Frobie told you, you know, he has, their family, whoever owns that property, also has the rights to sell their property and sell it for the, you know, and sell it to whom they want, to whom they want.
You know, obviously, you know, he got sick, he told me, he's like, my 10-year plan became a two-year plan when he got sick and he had to, he had to sell it. He was taking care of his sister, I know all the background and the history. I knew when we moved in that that land was not going to be there forever, I'm not stupid. It's prime real estate. I mean, even if you came back and said, hey, we, 170 acres, we're going to open it up a little bit more, we're going to put 80 homes in here. That Tuscan II estate, I was like, oh. They did low density, they made an effort to actually open it up a little bit. I mean, I'm sure the houses will be beautiful, and I know they're going to be real expensive, but it's going to be one after the next, after the next. It's just, it's not, it's changing flavor, and I've only been here eight years, so you've probably lived here your whole lives, but what I've seen here, like Oak Ridge, custom homes, space, awesome layout, you know, just, just different, it's changing everything. And it's going to happen down the road and down the road. I just, it's a shame that the acreage, the number of houses per acreage, you know, is what it is, and it's not a little bit bigger, you know, because this is 90 acres, it's a giant tract of land. So, I don't know, I just wanted to make my statements, there's not much more else that, you know. I guess I've got technical questions around drainage and sidewalks and stuff, but, I mean, that stuff is, is drowning air, quite frankly.
Can I just say to you, sir, that, you know, one of the things that this came, that we, how we got to this, and there's a, there was a plan, 2022 plan, that maybe you weren't here at the time, because it came together...
Twenty, twenty.
What's that?
Ten years ago.
Yeah, ten years ago, in 2013, and so, that has to be revisited again. And if that's your feelings and stuff, when that, when those meetings and those times are publicized, and I would suggest that you come to those meetings, because that plan and the conservative Conservation District that's in place right now is in place because we went through all these workshops 10 years ago and opened it up to the public, and the people that came to those meetings, you know, they, they wanted that we went through all bunches of stuff with notices to residents and so on, and nobody came and opposed it to the point where it didn't go through. And what happens is now you have development going on in Peters Township, and yes, people want to come to Peters Township, and you have developers that want to build to make to help them come. When the, when the farms, and this was out in the sticks and nobody was here, you had a 35 or 50-foot setback and a 40-foot on the back and 15 on the side, and they were building custom homes, and nobody went all the way to those lines. Now they've changed that because they're trying to maximize the number of homes. So when that time comes up, you know, show up at those meetings and voice your comments, and if other people feel the same way, they should do the same.
Yeah. Farms will be gone by then, but, yeah, I hear your point.
Well, no, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be reviewed sooner than that.
Yeah, but it, it'll be too late for this, so...
Well, for this one, yes, but there's still other properties in the township, so...
Yeah.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Can I have some of...
Hello, my name is Kathy Ross, and I own this house right here. Could you zoom in there, please?
What's your address, ma'am?
105 Meredith. More.
That's, that's as far as it'll go, I'm sorry.
Is that it?
Yep.
So I have a couple of questions. Meredith Drive right now goes like this, and my Governor's Drive comes out here.
Yep.
So if you're going to put Meredith Drive here, what is going to happen to my Governor's Drive? That's the first question. Second question is... Second question is, we have a sand mound.
Okay.
So I don't know, we haven't had an invitation to be a part of this, I don't know if that's going to be a part of your plan, to invite us to be on this, get into the septic system? Would that be a part of this? And the copuses right there, too? Okay. Yeah, I'm concerned about the traffic here, too. And we never got an invitation in 2013.
Could I have you come up to the microphone because this is being taped?
We never received an invitation in 2013 about a planning meeting about this. We got an invitation recently about this, that's when the questions was raised. Now my house is for sale and my husband is going to talk about that.
Ma'am?
Oh, and I have one more.
Could you sign, I think there's a sheet up here.
And I have one more question. Please don't tell me that all those houses are going to be gray like the Eddie Homes in Just About Farms. Is that the plan?
I don't believe they're all gray. I know there's.
They're mostly all gray. It's depressing.
And the homeowners, you know, choose those.
John, do you want to answer those questions?
Sure. Yeah, as far as the Governor's Drive, we would be glad to work with you to see what your preference is, whether it be to tie in to, if you want to look on the screen there, he has the light shining, you know, whether it would be to tie into Frobie, you know, more to the south, kind of straight ahead from where you're aiming now, or to loop around and tie into, you know, what would be Meredith.
But that goes off of my property. My property goes to Meredith Drive and then your new road goes beyond that. So that means, where am I going to go in the dirt?
No, that's not.
He said earlier that they were going to tie in the driveways to the newly constructed roads.
Are you familiar with East McMurray Road in front of the new high school?
I can't understand what you're saying.
East McMurray Road, where the new high school is located?
Yeah.
The red light?
Right.
Where the entrance to the high school is? The old McMurray Road became a service road, but there are some, I'm not sure.
I don't know how you can still do that there. Would you do that there?
What I was going to say, they had to extend two or four driveways to connect to the new McMurray.
Meaning they didn't leave those homes stranded.
Yeah, they wouldn't be stranded.
Yeah, I guess, you know, in general, I know the developer reached out to all the neighbors within a, you know, a certain distance and I think the people here might have even, might reach back out to see that, I know. You know, we want to work with our neighbors. I know it's not what you want to see, but you have a good developer here who's working with the township, who's been in the township for years, who's willing to work with, you know, with our neighbors and on the topic of whatever the questions are, driveways, pedestrian access, sidewalk, sanitary sewer, you know, extension. And to answer your question, the township has requested that, you know, we not only provide easements right-of-way to facilitate that, but also, you know, make sure that the physical sewer is at a, you know, that elevation that it could, that it can service those properties to the extent that, you know, it's feasible, so.
So you understand, the sand mound's going to fail at some point.
Yeah, I know, we're having that.
Wait, let me finish.
There'll be, there'll be opportunity for you to connect your house into a public sewer, which adds value to your property. I know you don't like what's happening, but getting that public sewer is a great thing for all those homeowners along Meredith.
And what about taxes?
What about taxes?
Well, my taxes have gone up recently. Somebody told me that this is, this, building all this is going to bring the taxes down. I don't know how that's possible.
This, that development won't have any impact on your personal tax bill for your property?
For the, I mean, for all of Peters Township?
I think that discussion might be for another day. We're just trying to focus and stay germane to this preliminary master plan, so.
And this property right here? Right there, that's for sale. I don't know what's going on with that. But that is not, that has not been purchased by Eddie Homes? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or concerns from the audience? Please come up and, again, please state your name for this particular item and.
All right, again, my name is Joel Ross, I'm Kathy's husband. And just for the record or to explain, for the previous 26 or 27, maybe 28 years, we did live at 105 Meredith Drive and our family's been in there until just this summer. Our daughter and her husband that were living in there, were still there, I mean, just moved, so it's for sale now. It is, I'm afraid it's going to impact our value that we will get for the sale of our house, pretty obvious. So unless we can beat the change here, which I feel a little sorry for who we sell it to, if that's the case, that, hope they know what's coming up. But I don't want to, you know, forfeit more value to my house because of that. So there is certainly, you can look at that and you can see, what I would say, the existing houses in there appear to be the low-density kind of setbacks and spacings in there. Ours is just under one acre size lot there and it's a nice size. So one question I would have is, how do we determine in Peters Township the low-density and high-density categories as I, I'm just learning tonight, I apologize, I'm not more educated on this issue, but this is obviously a development that looks like a high-density plan to me. Even with the 25 to 30% space, open spaces in between it, it's just the lot sizes and how close it, like my neighbor said here, Jonathan Hughes-Dash, it's just going to be rows of intense housing there in between where the streets go. And you look at the other things that are presented, Tuscany, for example, that was referred to as a low-density housing. How is the master plan at Peters Township managing the juxtaposition of some high-density areas and some low-density areas? Because just like Jonathan said, he really liked that setting there. We're obviously losing the view of that nice farm land in front of our front door and porch. But we're also losing some money there. So I'm trying to understand, or somebody could briefly explain, how the policy works at Peters Township for high-density housing versus low-density housing? Because I feel like we're getting slammed with a whole lot of high-density housing right along our four houses there, well, four to five houses that are, you know, one acre or more lots there that are low-density, especially when you consider all of our backyards bordered right on Peterswood Park, which is a, I agree, it's a big plus. That's a big plus. So is the sewer, too. I agree with you, thank you, Ed, for that. And good point. So that's, you know, that might raise our value some to say that's coming. On the other hand, though, we're going to see that the aesthetics certainly is going to decrease the value, possibly more than the increase in value to the perceived buyers there of getting public sewer.
What is your specific question?
Oh, okay. Is this considered high-density plan?
No.
No.
It's just what the plan happens to be.
And so just for an overarching conversation about how this came to play, when we did, as Ted mentioned, did a comprehensive plan in 2013, Plan Peters 2022. As part of that comprehensive plan, there was strenuous efforts in terms of workshops and meetings where we ran through initiatives and goals for the township, identified issues in the township, and a lot of it was housing because we are predominantly a residential township. As part of that conversation was, okay, you know, we're seeing a lot of these million-dollar plus homes on half-acre and greater lots, maybe that's not sustainable in the long term, so let's look at opportunities elsewhere. These properties, this property in Tuscany, too, they still retain the half-acre residential, low-density residential underlying zoning. They could have come in and done half-acre development. That requires less open space set aside than is supposed to the conservation residential overlay, so there is a trade-off there. As part of, one of the outcomes from that comp plan was the establishment of the CR overlay and the MR overlay, which are similar. But tonight we're focused on the conservation residential overlay. It allows for more density. I do not want to say it's high-density by any means. We're still, for this proposed development, less than two dwelling units an acre. High-density is north of maybe 10 dwelling units an acre and we don't get that at all in the township, especially in these areas.
10 what per acre?
10 houses.
10 or greater. I mean, that's.
Per acre?
Then you're looking at townhouses and apartments. That's categorized as high-density residential. This, in my mind, is still low-density.
Less than two lots per acre.
And so, you know, that.
Where is there 10 houses on a single acre in Peters Township?
That's what he's saying, sir, is we don't have that.
Very few are between.
There's other areas that are, I think part of your question, sir, is how can you tell what is where? So there is a map in Peters Township, there's a map that you can look at that'll tell you where is low-density, where is conservation? That's a published map that Peters Township has that'll give you the entire township.
I have seen that.
Yeah, and that's what, I think that's.
With your color zones.
Right, and that's where this comes from. So I think what you're saying is, how would I know? And you would know by looking at that map and you could see what different areas are zoned as or have, for development, for what you have to do. And then our ordinance will outline for those areas what is permitted and what is required in each of those districts. So I think what you're asking is, is how would I know? Or how would I be able to tell? That's all written out, whether in township maps or in our ordinance. It spells out specifically and that's, and we're required to do that and that's something that, you know, is available to you.
It's on the website.
Okay. I have looked at some of that and I'm still learning, so I'm working on it. Thank you for your patience, by the way, with all this. We're trying to learn.
Sure.
You know, because this isn't our livelihood, you know, but it affects our.
So when you look at a half-acre lots, and they're half-acre lots, how many houses would that be per acre?
Two.
Right. And overall, this property still does that because of the amount of open space that is required to be provided. The houses are closer together, not my favorite thing as well, okay? I don't really particularly like this plan, but because of that Peters 2022 plan that went through the township and it was approved and accepted by council, this body, the only thing that we can do like a referee is say, you're either in bounds or you're out of bounds, good catch, bad catch, first down, or, you know, you got to punt. And this checks all the boxes for the requirements that are required for a conservation residential district, which is sitting on top of a low-density residential district, the half-acre lots from, you know, 1781 or whenever they started that, that's underneath it. So a developer comes in and buys this property, they can either do half-acre lots and the roads and that kind of thing, or they can put the homes closer together with smaller lots and leave more open space in other general areas. No matter which way you go, you got to have stormwater management, sanitary management, grading plans, all that other stuff, either way.
I see.
Okay.
So the average of all this, 88-point-something acres here, you know, and it.
How many was it?
170 houses.
Yep, it's about. So when we calculate density, density is a calculation of dwelling units per acre. So it's 87.9.
The whole thing with open area and everything.
Correct. 87.9 acres, 170 divided by 87.9 is 1.9. Yep, so just under two dwelling units per acre.
Okay. It's just when you have the houses right along the streets in there, they look a whole lot closer than just.
And they, in truth, they are.
They are a lot.
They are closer to the road.
You just have some nice green spaces in between it. I agree with that point.
Right.
But boy, right along the streets there.
And you know, when we.
How many setbacks?
That's a point I made earlier.
I didn't realize, I'm trying to sort of debate issues that aren't even going to affect this here, it's too late. There's a big process, I presume, to talk about changing setbacks. Maybe another question is, in Peters Township, where would be the closest comparable housing plan or any residential, you know, space like this that's of any major size that would be closest to this? So we know what it's going to compare to look like.
For this builder in particular, you could go to Just About Farms. The only thing I would hesitate for you there is there under the old road right-of-way width of 20 feet. We bumped it up for all these developments to 24 feet. So that, it doesn't sound like a lot, but it really does make a sizable difference when you're actually sitting and driving on the roads. You push that out a little bit further. You could go to Just About Farms, you could go to Juniper Woods.
What about Sherwood Pond? Would that be similar?
Sherwood Pond is developed under different criteria.
Well, just for my comment as a neighbor, especially because now that we just moved in at Springville Road, which is closer to the Just About Farms, two streets there, it does change the appearance of that part of the township. It really does, especially because, I have to grade, they're two or three tones of gray and a little black.
The other one, sir, that you may want to look at, if you go behind Bauer Hill Elementary School, the Woodlands, I mean, that one's a little bit of an older development.
Okay. I think it's an older one, actually.
An older development back there, but those houses, you figure it's a, I mean, there's, I think there's a couple cul-de-sacs.
Going on down there.
But you go all around, that's a pretty sizable area that has houses right next.
99 lots in the Woodlands.
That's kind of what I'd like to look at.
That goes 99.
You go to Sherwood, you go to Sherwood Pond and Maid Marian, it's got sidewalks on both sides of the road. It's, they're patio homes, it's a different housing product, but it's the same general feel.
Yeah, I think these houses are.
Thank you for giving me the time. I realize we're all sitting here listening to this. Just a couple other comments. I think Mr. Patch Chapman here made a very good comment, so I'm just going to also say, I agree, please take note that on Frobie Road, the comment was made that nothing has been changed here for Frobie Road, where as it comes down over the crest and there's a sharp S curve before it gets to Just About Road or Bebout Road there. No, no, the other direction, the opposite direction. Towards Bebout Road and head towards Bauer Hill.
There is a school, yeah, there is.
That is a dangerous S curve. I agree with my neighbor. They cut that curve. I'd never admit, I'm doing it, okay, but people cut that, okay? Because it's just so easy to do that if you don't see anybody coming, but that's dangerous. And I would suggest that the township should give some additional consideration to that, even though soon as my house sells with rates going up, it may not be as quick as I.
Yeah, I mean, those types of issues around.
Won't matter to me, but I'm concerned for future residents there.
I understand, and you know, those conversations around road geometry, as Ed alluded to earlier, when we look at paving programs in the future, if we identify any section of Frobie Road that needs to be addressed outside of this development, we would work with Mike and determine if there's anything that needs to be done there to alleviate.
I strongly suggest and agree with my neighbor here that that would be a safety factor to consider when you get the chance. All right, let's see. Was there a traffic analysis? Was another thought I had tonight here, with so many more cars, it seems like it's inadequate roads to get in the one direction to the elementary school, that same direction to get on to Just About, or Bebout Road, come on down and eventually get to McMurray Road to get to all of the suburban major shopping centers and all of that?
They have done a traffic study. And the scope of that traffic study is provided by our Township Consulting Engineer. They run their study, they do their distribution, we review it, we comment on it, and that's still in the works. There's some back and forth going on about that, but.
With this many new houses?
Correct.
Wow. And it passed?
Yeah, I mean, to this point now.
I was just going to say, yes. I mean, they're revising the study because the original was two different developments and this plan now encompasses both, bring them together, redoing the geometry. But it's also, it'll be all these intersections you see in the, on the plan, plus the intersection of Frobie, Bebout, Bauer Hill, and then the other end at Frobie and Sugar Camp. And those other nearby, you could tell me, remind me what they are, but Pemberley, the other developments that are right there, Royal Estates, their traffic studies that have already been done, Pemberley's been approved because it's under construction, Royal Estates, I think, we're still working on that. Their traffic is being added, you know, they'll have some traffic on Frobie Road, too. So it's, this development is cumulative, it's taking into account the other developments that are in the area that are being passed and worked on. So it's a comprehensive plan, it's a comprehensive study. They're meeting the criteria. Sugar Camp and Bebout are pen-dot roads, so pen-dot's involved in reviews of traffic studies for some other developments, but they're being, these are intersections that are commonly being studied with any new developments that come in on Bebout and Sugar Camp. Right.
Well, as a resident for 27 years coming through there, I'm just speaking from my own everyday experience for that long, I would suggest both ends of Frobie Road do need attention. I agree with what you're doing here, but I think the other end of Frobie Road would do Peters Township a good service if you would take a more serious look. This is just preliminary and I don't know how your traffic impact fees, income funds[1786.91] are, but it seems to me this should be on your list, too, to fix that. The four-way stop sign was a definite good thing a few years back, but then I wouldn't be surprised if we're gonna have a stoplight go in there.
And you're correct, we're, we're getting closer to that, this is, this will not over, this, this one project here will not overload it, what really is gonna be the kicker is something further down on Beebout, if, if, you know, a bigger property on Beebout further down towards Venetia would, would come in and add, it's, it's the traffic on Beebout that's really gonna drive the need for this traffic light. So we're getting, we're getting close, you're, you are correct, we're monitoring it, and when we, a development that comes in and triggers that light, it will likely happen.
Well, those are comments maybe just for me, they're helpful to the township for future years, you know, maybe it's a benefit giving me a few minutes here. That's everything I can think of right now. I understand that these lots are meeting our, our current setback rules and all that, but when you see it laid out like this, it looks like, wow, is that really true? But I guess when you take all 88 acres into it, the average is true, but in certain areas it's much more highly concentrated, and then in between, you know, there's green space, so. Thank you. Thank you for letting me talk so long, I apologize for.
No, you're good, you're good, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Can I ask two more questions?
You have to come up front to do it.
What, what elementary school, what elementary school would these people go to, the children?
Bauer Hill.
I would assume Bauer Hill, but that's a school district question.
Yeah, that's really small to accommodate that. And what would be the average cost of each of these houses?
We were told from the, from the builder themselves, starting around 715 for their smallest product, all the way up to starting.
750.
715, up to 850 for their larger products. So that range would be the starting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to make a, any comments? Okay, back to the commission here.
I guess my, the only question that I have, and I apologize, is, when we talked about what easements, that you're still working on, the easements and the things with the sanitary sewer, with us being pretty close to that, you know, the 1.9 versus the 2, is there any concern that, that that would have to be, the area that's been set aside for that is sufficient at this point in time, for whatever, I think you had said that we still need a lot of easements, there's some things that need to be done before you can move down?
There's really only one easement we still need, and it's the actual sanitary sewer line easement through the golf course.
Okay.
So all the easements within John's proposal are compliant.
They're there?
Yes, it's the off-site connecting easement that we need to acquire before we go to council.
And is that just accounted for, at least the area in the, in the plan itself? These are all counted for already?
It's a separate piece of property, right?
Okay. That's a separate piece, okay, that was my question, okay.
Would you also enlighten me at least, who, number 15, item 15, the owners, the ownership of each parcel, open space parcel?
HOA.
The HOA owns a little, okay.
Yeah, we just asked that they labeled out in the plan, so it'd make it easier for us.
Do they put corner posts or anything up, or do we do that, or we just leave it?
If it's township, we put mark posts, but if it's private, we do not.
Okay.
Any other questions from the commission to John or the staff? John, thank you very much for your presentation.
Mm-hmm.
If I don't hear any more comments from the audience or the commission, may I entertain someone to have an active motion here?
I'll move to recommend approval of the Frobbe Development LLC, preliminary plan for preliminary plan approval encompassing the 15 planning staff recommendations.
You have a motion, second? I'll second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The winner is passing the motion, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Is there any other planning, commission, or staff comments at this time?
Not at this time, no. Ted asked, Ted asked before the meeting. Yeah, we're gonna have a regular meeting next month. Ted asked us before the meeting where we are on these potential changes to the overlay. We're still working internally, coming up with some recommendations. We're hopeful to have a joint workshop, hopefully this winter, but it is budget season for council, so we're very busy in that regard, so we're gonna try to fit that in if we can, but we'll keep the planning commission in the loop.